PM and Mr. Ant Young has joined us. So we are going to start our Anacortes City Council meeting tonight for January 19th, 2021. I call the meeting to order. Ms. Hunt, would you take the role?
Mr. Carter?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Mr. Walters?
Here.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Here.
Ms. Moulton?
Here.
Mr. McDougal?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll move to item two on the agenda, and the first item is item two A, which is my COVID-19 update. And as of today, Island Hospital has tested 10,963 individuals. We've had, they've had 226 positive cases. We've admitted a total of 39 people to Island Hospital over the course of the pandemic, and we've had zero fatalities. For the month of, for January 17th in Skagit County, we've had 3,584 cases, as opposed to a month ago, we had 2,688. We've had 46 fatalities as of January 17th in the county, as opposed to a month ago, 32. In the county, we've had 214 people hospitalized, and as of a month ago, 171. In Skagit County reports that currently in the 98221 zip code, there are 315 current COVID cases, positive cases. As of January 15th, 5,328 Skagit residents had received their first dose so far of Moderna. 3,171 people had received the Pfizer vaccine, and that's roughly 4% of the total population in Skagit County. And they will begin shortly doing an updated weekly version of the total vaccines given. Skagit County is currently in Phase 1A of the vaccinations. Vaccines in Phase 1A individuals is currently available at LaConner Drug in Skagit County, and Island Drug in Island County. To schedule a vaccine at one of these locations, please visit the following links. You must be able to confirm you're in Phase 1A status when you schedule. Currently eligible, eligible and stated in Phase 1A, tiers one and two, you must be a high-risk worker in the healthcare setting, a high-risk first responder, residents and staff in nursing homes and assisted living facilities and other community-based congregant living settings where most individuals are over the age of 65 that are receiving care, supervision or assistance, and all other workers in the healthcare setting. I know as to date, the major, I think, all but maybe two people in the fire department in Anacortes have received their first vaccine, and I know last Friday, many of the police department got their first vaccine. Currently, no, excuse me, so beginning June 26th, so a week from January 26th, a week from today, available to Phase 1B Tier 1 will include all people 65 years and older. Now, that is a change from a week ago. That was, it was 70 years, so the governor has lowered the age, so we match across the board with all CDCs across the United States. We're now uniform with that. So starting next week, anyone 65 years and older, or people 50 years and older, living in a multi-generational setting may, are now qualified. And so those folks can go ahead and call the LaConner Drug or Island Drug for a vaccine, or work with your local purveyor or the hospital.
Mayor Geer?
Yes, Mr. Walters?
I had understood from Island Hospital on a post they made just an hour ago that they were going to start taking appointments tomorrow for-
That's great. That's new information that I have. So that was just an hour ago?
Yeah.
Good to know. So we've heard that-
Tomorrow, tomorrow at noon.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Walters. So that's even better, have our local hospital. In Washington State, we've had to date 294,000 cases. We've had 3,974 deaths. To go forward from Phase 1 to Phase 2 in our north region, we must meet four metrics. The first metric is we have to have over 10% decreasing trend in two weeks rate of COVID-19 cases per 100,000 population. We have had a 3% decreasing trend, so we have not met that metric. We have to have over a 10% decreasing trend in a two-week rate of new COVID-19 hospital admissions rates per 100 population, and we have had a 61% increasing trend, so we have not met that metric. ICU occupancy in hospitals must be less than 90%, and we currently are at 61%, so we're meeting that metric. COVID-19 test positivity rates need to be less than 10%, and we're at 4%, so we're meeting that metric. So to date, we're meeting two of the four metrics that we need to be able to move to Phase 2 in the state's metric system for phases. In the United States, we've had over 24 million cases of COVID. We are now at four, over 400,000 cases of fatalities.
Mayor Geer?
Yes, Ms. Moulton?
Just one question about the metrics is, do all of the four counties in our region have to meet those to move forward? And when you're talking about these metrics right now, you're talking about all four of the counties?
It's combined, it's combined-
Thanks.
Yes. Which before, it was just county by county. Now, four of us have to get it together. Worldwide, we've had 96 million confirmed cases of COVID, including a little over 2 million deaths, and that's reported to us from the World Health Organization. And that completes my COVID report for this evening. Are there any additional comments? Any other information the council may have for the community? All right, well, that's that. And it's really good news to hear that we can make appointments at Island Hospital starting at noon tomorrow. That's, that's wonderful. So now, we're going to move on to item 2B in the Skagit County Law and Justice Council report. Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. The Skagit County Law and Justice Council met for the first time in over a year via electronic means, and it was January 12th, so last week. And since it has been since a long time we've met, and of course, my dry sense of humor, I mentioned, of course, to the council that we, nothing's really happened in law enforcement since our last meeting, right? But anyway, but I will take the opportunity, and if we can get it in a minute, RCW 72.09.300 is the state law that, that governs law and justice councils, that establishes these councils by county. And it takes about three minutes to read it. I won't read the whole thing, but I'll, I'll highlight a couple of, or one of the main points. Maximizing local resources, including personnel and facilities, reducing duplication of services, and sharing resources between local and state governments in order to accomplish local efficiencies without diminishing effectiveness in things like jail management, local community policing, supervision of programs like that. So just wanted to highlight what, what the whole reason of the law and justice council is. So anyway, first thing, we got a jail update. Good news at our Law and Justice Center that they were up to, they were down to 135 folks there, and that was the low point to manage COVID. And on the good news is they did a really good job managing COVID at the jail because the numbers were down. The bad news that, of course, for those folks who are, might need to go there, mandatory, they were only taking mandatory bookings, which generally means serious felonies that they put in there. So they limited the number of inmates coming into the jail. But again, because the jail is, has a health accreditation, they had the numbers down, they were managed to, to manage COVID quite well at our, at our county justice center. The, kind of the bad news there is they're having trouble getting, the numbers are, it's about up to 160 inmates at the jail, and like everybody else, they're having difficulty hiring. So that's one of the stumbling blocks that they're having, getting things back to normal. The other point I wanted to make, Lisa Janiky is now the chair of the Law and Justice Council, and she, of course, was asking for ideas upcoming. The biggest one on my mind was, again, coordinating the assets of what they call 400 units in SEEDRO, navigation teams in the county, or outreach coordinators, Mount Vernon, as far as the embedded social workers. So finding ways to, I know the, I think it's one of, the HASS Committee on Council is working on those resources, that resource list. This, I think, is an important element of that, those county resources that we can, we can tie together, because I talked about, we have funds available to do some sort of contracting work together. So she said she would take that on, and I think that's mostly it of what we talked about there.
Thanks. Thank you. And item C is our finance committee. Mr. McDougal? No?
Mayor Geer?
Mr. Carter?
We had talked about the parks' usage fees for overnight camping, boat launch, increasing the fees to match the county, but I don't want to get too much into it because they're going to come to the city council and just give us an update on it.
Any other additions to that report? Okay. We'll move on now to item 2D, which is our fiber committee.
Mayor Geer?
McDougal?
The fiber department's got a report tonight, so I won't take up too much time. I did want to mention a couple highlights, though. During the great windstorm the other day, we did not have any outages. However, would like to commend James Martin, our networking technician, who basically stayed up all night monitoring the system and coordinating and, you know, communicating with no one else as far as, like, just keeping an eye on things. And he did that while despite having lost power at his home. So a big thank you to James for working by, by headlamp and keeping an eye on things. The second item I wanted to talk about is, we did have, we had a brief issue for, I think, a couple days with some of our IP addresses. And so the way this works is that, basically, the internet itself has exhausted our supply of IPv4 addresses, so they've all been allocated, and they're not all in use, but they've all been allocated. And so the only way to get IP addresses, if you're a new provider like the city of Anacortes is, the only way to get IP addresses is kind of on the open market, so there's brokers that you can acquire them from. And so we acquired our first address range, and that range worked great. Our second range that we acquired, it's from a different geography, and, and basically there's kind of, sort of geolocation servers out on the internet that haven't, they haven't timed out yet. So those addresses were erroneously, you know, still thought to be some, in some other geography, so it caused some problems for a couple days. The department moved very quickly to just move everyone to the, to the good block of addresses, and we expect, you know, it'll take, it'll take 60 or 90 days, but all of those geolocation sort of spots on the internet, they'll all timeout as far as that other address range that we have in, in our possession. So once those, that times out, then that geolocation problem won't exist anymore, and we can start using those addresses again. So we've got enough to cover us for the time being, but just a heads up about that and how some folks may have experienced a few issues. And then, the last item I wanted to cover before the fiber committee gives their update later today is, I just want to, to thank and congratulate them for hitting 500 active customers by the end of the year. And as of January 14th, we were at 516 customers. So this, this is terrific. We're, you know, we're running real ISP with 500 customers. Our three sort of initial zones, we have a take rate or signup rate of 40% or more in all three. So thank you to the fiber department for, for rounding out the year in great fashion.
Thank you, Mr. McDougal. The next item is item 2E. It's our public works committee. Mr. Walters?
Got that one. A couple of items, we moved pretty quickly today. First of all, we have been awarded a million-dollar grant for the 32nd and M Avenue Roundabout, which we're all very pleased about. That should almost fully fund that project, which will free up a significant amount of impact fees that were otherwise going to need to be spent on the project. Public Works has done a significant amount of thinking about this intersection. I'm sure some of our residents have too, but they've evaluated the question of whether we want to do a traffic light or a four-way stop. And there are metrics that determine whether a traffic light or a four-way stop is appropriate for an intersection. Hard numbers and a traffic manual that correspond to traffic volumes. And that intersection does not have either the right numbers, the right amount of traffic, or the right balance of traffic on either side of the intersection to justify a four-way stop sign solution. Moreover, as Mr. Buckenmeyer is fond of saying, and I said that I would repeat, a four-way stop is a 24-hour-a-day solution to a two-hour-a-day problem. So we don't think that's appropriate, and we think, in fact, that a roundabout would work quite a bit better. So that's good news about that funding availability. We also talked about every other week recycling service. Waste Management brought us some numbers about what the savings might be if we switched from our weekly service to every other week for recycling only. Not yard waste, not trash, just recycling. It would save our customers about 15% on their bills. That'd be $1.45 or so per month on their $9 or so recycling bill, or $18 a year. It would obviously reduce wear and tear on Waste Management's trucks. It would save greenhouse gas emissions. But overall, the committee doesn't think that that's a significant enough rate decrease in order to justify the disruption and the reduction in service. Of course, we welcome council to disagree with us, but we kind of expect not to hear that disagreement. And of course, we'd accept any public comment either, but our recommendation at this point was just to set that aside for the moment. We also heard from staff about our wastewater treatment plant outfall project. The staff plan for this project, because of the complicated nature of it, is to not do traditional sealed bid procurement for the, this repair project on our outfall. Instead, we'd exercise a state law that allows us to avoid sealed bid, and we would, we would pursue our own RFQ process, a request for qualifications, where we would evaluate people or contractors based on their qualifications, and also, in this case only, in some respects on price. They're going to bring us a resolution to describe this process, to get our blessing for it, but that's what they are thinking about, and it is, their thinking has evolved based on our feedback, because previously, we said that they, they really needed to have an RFQ process at least to avoid doing a sealed bid and to get our, our council blessing on avoiding that traditional procurement. We have also gotten, apparently, confirmation from FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, that they are committed to being a partner on that project, and maybe picking up 75% of the cost of the project, up to $18 million, and potentially even beyond. So that is extraordinarily good news. The project is probably 20 million, or $22 million just for construction, but we've also got design costs, permitting costs. It is, it is, there are more details here, but we'll get briefings on this from Public Works directly later. Public Works also is going to bring us information on the problems with the existing incinerator at the wastewater plant in, I think, the next couple of weeks. They are going to bring us a summary presentation on the problems with the incinerator, but also on the 20 or so options that are out there to replace the incinerator. So I think it's our sense this is completely consistent with what we were asking for. Some of those options will not get very much detail in the presentation because they just aren't really possible for us, which I think is fine. But they will drill down into more detail on the options that are viable. It's probably a 90-minute presentation, and I think we promised the council would sit through the whole thing. I think that we talked just very briefly about wealth and commercial. We raised a couple of our concerns, which didn't really have time to get addressed in the meeting, but they're going to bring a full presentation to council on that Monday after next. So we at least articulated our concerns, so staff can be thinking about those. I think they said that we're going to be asked to make some at least preliminary decisions on moving forward with that in two weeks. And I think that's all we talked about.
That's all? Very comprehensive. Carolyn?
Thank you. The one thing about the, the universe of options presentation we'll get for the wastewater treatment plant, I believe that will be more toward the end of March, that we'll have that nice presentation.
Great. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Walters? All right. So now, we're going to move on to item 2F, and this is Civil Service Commission Appointments. So tonight, I asked the council for the following appointments and reappointments to the city board and commission presented, was presenting, I'm presenting to you tonight. And those are for our Civil Service Commission. And first of all, we have William Kalin, and I'd like to appoint him to this, back to the, these are all reappointments, to the Civil Service Commission, starting January 1st of this year through December 31st of this year. Also, John Staples, who is a long-serving member of the civil service, and also Vicky Stash as chairman, and all these positions would run January 1st to December 31st of this year. And so I'm making this on-
Mayor Geer?
Yes.
I understand those don't require council confirmation?
No, I'm just, I'm just telling you what, no action's necessary, but I do want to communicate with you that we're, we're taking that. Mr. Miller, do you have a question?
Yeah. No, no, I appreciate you communicating it to us, and I was hoping maybe you could give a, a number of us on council served on the planning commission, but the Civil Service Commission is sometimes a mystery to some of us. If you could give us a 32nd, what, what do they do for our fine city, for those who might be watching?
I'm going to let Emily do that, because she's a long-serving staff person that's worked with the Civil Service Commission, and she could do this, do your question.
Thank you, perfect.
Thank you, Emily. Can you talk about the Civil Service Commission?
Sorry. Certainly, Mayor. The Civil Service Commission is set up through RCW to provide oversight of the police and fire positions. The state RCW determines by, by the size of the department, which of the leadership positions are in civil service positions. So in the fire department, all the way up through the assistant chief are civil service positions, and in the, in the police department, it's only up to the lieutenants. I'm sorry, the, the sergeants that are in the civil service. So basically, the, while a person is on a probationary status, they don't have access to the collective bargaining agreement to help them make decisions about discipline and whatnot. So their ability is to go through the Civil Service Commission. After that, the, the employees have to make a remedy choice, whether they want to go through their collective bargaining agreement or through the civil service. So the Civil Service Commission helps to establish the rules, primarily for selection and hiring, but in some cases, discipline when, for these positions. And so it was set up to ensure that there are fair hiring processes in place. The Civil Service Commission's rules were updated several years ago, and I'm sorry, I don't have those in front of me, and it's not been just on the, the top of my mind, but I believe that they serve six-year positions. We have three commissioners and two appointees. So in the event that there was any ever, in time when we didn't have somebody on board, that we could ask the appointees to, to help us to fill those roles. And it's a very committed group. They, they serve long-term and be on a, on a monthly basis, but we really do appreciate the, the work to ensure that we have good selection processes in place and that discipline is handled in a fair and competent manner.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for the question, Mr. Miller. Important. And thank you to those three individuals that serve us year after year. At this time, open for public comment, but I don't see that we have any member of the public attending this evening, so unless I see that change in a moment. Anyone want to speak? Okay. There's no one in attendance from the public, so we'll move on then. Item four, under our consent agenda. We have the minutes of January 11th meeting and approval of claims. I look for a motion.
Mayor Geer?
Yes.
I made a change, unfortunately, a late change to the minutes, item 4A, just to correct the record from the public safety report. I believe Ms. Hunt already has those, so if there aren't any other changes to that, I move to approve consent agenda items A and B.
Second? Okay. A motion by Mr. Miller, and second by Mr. McDougal. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So at this time, we'll move on to item five, under other business. Item 5A is open for public comment, and this is ordinance 3082, establishing a $4.5 million line of credit with Savvy Bank to provide the resources to continue build out of the city access fiber network. This is a discussion with possible action this evening. Mr. Hoagland?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and members of the audience. We'll see if I can share, share my screen. So I have on my screen here, you can see a copy of the ordinance, ordinance number 3082. Also have the term sheet or the letter of interest from the bank outlining the terms of the line of credit. So we've talked at length about this during our budget process. In fact, as you're all well, well aware of, this is incorporated into our budget as one of the resources to, to balance our budget. The line of credit is $4.5 million, is set for three years at a 1.75% interest rate. It's with local banks, Savvy Bank, they've been very easy to work with, and we are currently in the process of setting up a bank account with an additional account that this money will flow through from the line of credit through their account. We can there EFT into our account or directly use. So it's kind of, kind of housekeeping, I guess, as far as a $4.5 million loan can be housekeeping, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if council has any questions or thoughts about this.
Mayor Geer?
Ms. Moulton?
Thank you. Mr. Hoagland, I was wondering, and Ms. Chu, will it be possible for council and the public to receive periodic updates as to the city's level of indebtedness? I don't, I'm not thinking like monthly or anything, but every now and then, could we get an update?
Sure, absolutely. That would be very easy to incorporate into, into finance updates, and, and would probably be quite evident as we're going, as we're going through the fiber updates as well. So yeah, that's a, that's a great comment and very easy to accommodate.
Thank you.
Mayor Geer?
Mr. Miller?
Yeah, you know, we've just discussed this quite a bit. I just had one question about kind of mechanics of it. I appreciate Ms. Moulton's comment as well. I think the fiber report's a good place, but as far as the draw goes, I'm, I'm just, is it drawing up to the mayor's contract authority amount, or what, what's the limit on that draw? Or how, how, how do, how do you foresee managing that? Or do you see it as an issue at all? That's the only thing that stood out at me is, you know, if you're, if you need to draw, say, I don't know, $100,000, does that require council approval?
Right. That's a great question. And so the way this ordinance is structured and the way we've structured other debt instruments in the past is the, the ordinance that you're adopting tonight is the authorizing element to make those drawdowns in the future. to make those drawdowns in the future. So then those, as, so those drawdowns will really be left up to just the needs of the fiber department to, you know, to continue that build out. And that's, so thank you for bringing that up. I wanted to touch on this line of credit a little bit. We've talked about a variety of different resources over the last couple of years to accommodate the fiber department. And this line of credit, it's, we haven't authorized one of these in the past. But this gives us a lot of flexibility that we couldn't otherwise have through a traditional debt issue or, or a commercial loan. So this is, this gives us a lot of flexibility in terms of making those different draws and, and the amounts of those draws that we need and the, and the timing for those.
So I, so I think how I heard that answer is the authority to draw is as much as we've already authorized in the budget.
Yes. Right.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Walters and Mr. McDougall?
Is, is the entire $4.5 million authorized in the budget?
No, I, I want to say something like 3.7, around three. I, I think that's the number, maybe 3.3, around three and a half million, I think, is where we landed in the budget. I think since the, our last budget discussion, the, the scope of work, or at least the, the projected scope of work for 2021 may have shifted a little bit. So that, that entire, so that 3.5 that we authorized in the budget may not be sufficient to, to accommodate the scope of work that's now laid out before the fiber department for the next, I, I think for the next year or so. So I guess what I'm trying to say is like, this entire 4.5 million may be necessary to support the fiber department over the next 12, 18 months.
Yeah, and it seems to me that by the explicit text of the ordinance, that you might have the authority, that the finance director, who's the designated representative, might have the authority to pull the full amount, even beyond the budget's revenue projections.
Can I offer a clarification?
Yes.
So the ordinance here does authorize draws, but each draw has to be made in order to pay authorized expenditures. And so, you know, there wouldn't be the ability to make draws beyond what you are able to spend. In other words, if, if it requires the mayor to sign a contract and there's a limit on that contract, you can't draw beyond, you know, what you need to pay that contract. Is that, if that's helpful?
It is. So that's a good analysis of the flip side of that. And I also like that it's the finance director who is authorized to do the draws.
Mr. McDougall, do you have additional questions?
I had a quick comment and then a question as well. So yeah, I, the, the higher number, I believe, is because we, or the fiber department shifted the construction project plan from 2021 to construct the west side as opposed to the remainder of east from A Avenue, kind of all the way east. And so that puts 2021 doing underground, much more underground construction, so a higher dollar figure for that. And just for another quick piece, actually, I guess all I have is a comment here. If, if we were to draw the entire 4.5 line of credit over the, the course of the year at, at 1.75 interest, that's a monthly payment of about 16,000. And at the West End, we project if we get 35% take rate, that's 800, roughly 800 customers. And it only takes, it takes 300 customers to pay off that 16,000. So if we get all 800, you know, obviously, we're bringing in two and a half times the revenue that we would be sort of paying out in, in debt service. I think that's all I have.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other questions or comments?
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Walters?
The ordinance refers to it as a, or the cover letter, and the ordinance refers to it as a revolving line of, of credit. The, a letter from Savvy Bank calls it a bond. I assume this is not a big distinction, but could anyone address that?
Sure, happy to. So it's structured as a, as a line of credit, but in Washington State, a, a bank takes delivery of a note or a bond in order to sort of evidence that underlying obligation to repay. So it's, you know, words that have legal distinction, but they don't mean a lot functionally for, for what you're doing. That's helpful.
But does it mean that we're not paying interest on the full amount?
Yeah, this is, so this is also structured as it's revolving, and it's structured with semi-annual interest payments. So whatever you draw will begin to accrue interest. Interest will then be due on a semi-annual basis. So whatever has accrued over that last six months will, will come due, and I believe it's May and November interest payment dates. And then principal can be repaid as you budget for it or at maturity. And if you do repay it, it's revolving. And so if you draw it down, then pay it back, you can draw it again, up to a maximum of the 4.5 million outstanding at any one time.
So that last aspect is obviously very attractive. But otherwise, to me, what makes this most attractive is that we borrow what we need, we pay interest on that amount.
Other, other discussion or thoughts? Walters?
And I guess I would also note that we did have discussions with the fiber department, including before full council, about their expectations of paying back the interest in their business plan and their projections for revenue and expenditures all the way to 30 years out. So I'm satisfied that we're, we're ready for this. I move that we adopt the ordinance as presented.
Second.
And we have a motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Mr. Miller to approve ordinance 3082. Any other discussion? Ms. Hunt, would you take the vote?
Mr. Carter? Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougall?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, now item 5B, open for public comment. We still don't have any public with us this evening. Access Anacortes Fiber Internet Update. Ms. Chu?
I'll get this all set up.
Thanks so much for the, the support in regard to the, the line of credit. We will use that wisely as we continue with the expansion of the, the fiber network. Also wanted to thank Mr. McDougall for the, the fiber update from the fiber committee tonight. So please to present just an update on our network as of January 2021. Every month, as I am putting this information together, this slide always speaks to me. Because as I look back to, to last year, in March, we had nine customers in service. And as of this afternoon, we had 524 customers in service. So we're seeing our revenue continue to grow every, every month, and we're now at over $36,000 in, in monthly revenue to, to provide those customers with high-speed internet We make safety our priority. You know, every, every week, as I listen to Mayor Gear give the, the information about the, the COVID update, we know that people are putting trust in us to allow us into their homes and into their businesses in order to provide them with high-speed internet service. And that is a commitment that we are making to you, is that we are following every safety protocol out there to, to do it. We have 30 different guidelines that we are following to ensure that it's a safe transaction and that we are not putting our employees at, at risk and not putting our customers at risk either. So just, we appreciate the, the trust that the community has put into us, that we are using best practices to ensure that it's a, a safe process all the way around. Our customer orders, we currently have 437 residential customers and 87 business customers. And I'm really pleased to say that we probably need to combine the CBD, Old Town, M Avenue, and areas, aerial, aerial areas, one through six into one area now. Because that is our service area that we're currently providing. Those make up our service area. We currently have 715 orders in, in our service area out of the potential 2,273. And so as we look at that, we have a total market share of over 31.5%. So you can see in the areas that we started that we have higher market share. And we expect that same trend to, to continue in these new areas that we are beginning to, to be able to serve now. So 2020 construction is complete. You've been seeing this slide for several months now where we broke down the aerial sections into area section one through six. We ran into an issue where we needed to do some underground boring that was unexpected. We have all the aerial make-ready work complete, all the construction is complete, and all the splicing is done. So this is our new service map. We are able to provide service in all of the green areas in Anacortes. And we are really working in a systematic way to be able to put all of those pre-orders that we have in queue in, into service. So right now, we have 203 orders that are just waiting to go into service. And CJ, who does all the customer service and phone calls and, and scheduling, is being very methodical about how he's going to, going through. But if you are in one of those areas that is, that is a green on the map, please know that we're getting to you as quickly as possible. We do expect that it'll probably take up to about three months to get those 203 orders in, in service in terms of looking at our staffing.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mr. McDougall?
Really quickly, Ms. Chu, thank you for this. Are, of those 203 orders, I, part of the service area is a, a large commercial corridor. Do you have a sense for roughly how many of those 203 are businesses in South Commercial?
No, I don't have it broken down exactly, but well, let me, let me go back. Should we go back at this slide here? So as you look here in the commercial business district, we have 116 sign-ups and 103 of those are in service. Some of those businesses in the commercial business district are waiting for their current contracts to end before they're able to, to allow us to, to go in and, and to change their service over. So yes, I do have a, a good sense of that, and about, about 13 in the commercial business district. That being said, we are continuing to get business orders that, that are coming in.
Great. Yeah, that's kind of what I was referring to, is South Commercial Avenue outside of the commercial business district.
Okay. Yeah. And so those areas are, are going to be part of this, these that are needing to, that are, we have sign-ups but are not yet installed.
Got it. And we haven't, we haven't broken that out of those 203. And that's fine. That's, that's okay.
Sorry, I don't have that broken down between business and residential.
Okay. Well, thank you.
So we do have some special projects that we're, that we're working on. We are working with the Port of Anacortes on providing construction of the fiber network to their Bartholomew Road property. The tenants are actually going to be entering into service agreements for that internet. The port has shared with us that access to fiber was one of the decisions about where they decided to, to locate with that business. And we are in the, the final stages of just finalizing that contract. We expect that the senior center will be up in this first quarter of 2021, and that will help with some of the online focus that they're doing in terms of working with the seniors in the community. And Rock Island Communication has reached out to us about a dark fiber lease for health services, so they needed a connection. So we continue to have a lot of conversations and at the same time, staying very focused on providing that, that a business and residential service and getting those hookups complete. Moving into 2021, our network expansion will be west of Annacopper Road. We have this map now both on our website and on our Facebook page. The design work is currently underway. We are placing material orders for some of the things that have a longer order delay. And by the end of 2021, we will have passed an additional 2,300 premises. That will mean that we're up to about 4,700 premises that we have passed of, of the total 7,600 in the, the city. So we are making and will be, continue to make a good headway to, to be able to provide this service through a lot of the, the city. On the heels of that, our 2022 expansion will be from A Avenue eastward. And I just want to remind anybody who's watching this at home, we did make a shift in our 2021 expansion. That is because we have applied for a grant through the Economic Development Administration, I'm sorry, put Association of Administration, through their Public Works and Economic Adjustment Assistance Grant. So we have a grant application in for two and a quarter million dollars that would help to offset the cost of this build-out. The build-out is, and the grant are specific to areas where we have commercial development and economic development that, that can happen. So it wasn't something that we could just shift and say, well, we'll, you know, just apply that grant money to a different area in the city. So we made the, the strategic decision to, to wait and include this as part of our 2022 expansion. And we will be getting to, to those areas. But we needed to make sure that we were being thoughtful in terms of what our funding sources We continue to do outreach through the community. Just today, CJ put out a, a new advertisement on Facebook. And I can always tell because then immediately the orders start, start pouring in. So just appreciate that. People are very good, just in terms of reaching out to us if they have questions in town about what's going on with, with service providers. CJ is always there to, to answer the phone. I think that direct contact really goes a long way for people feeling confident in the services that we provide. And we'll continue to look for ways to, to get information out in the event that there are people that do not know that the city of Anacortes operates its own, own network and that we can provide high-speed fiber internet to their businesses and homes at very reasonable rates that, and that are very, very stable services. So we're going to continue to, to get that out. But even this afternoon, I saw multiple orders coming through. Every time I looked down, there was another order that had come in. So pleased, pleased with that. In terms of coming activity in regard to installations, we are going to continue to work on the installations in our current service area. We have 203 installations that are in queue, just waiting to go into service. And we are working with the Economic Development Administration on our grant. The application is finalized and has been submitted, and we expect to hear back from the committee on February 8th. So that is coming along and I hope to bring you very good news in, excuse me, in February, when we bring that, the monthly update. When we bring that the monthly update to you. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer that. I think that you'll see that the this monthly update really has moved more toward an update on our services that we're offering, the 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 status. We have a very good systems in place now, so we know how to build and operate the network. And now we just need to continue to to build and grow that network to to move out through the entire city. So we are working, working to do that as efficiently as possible. Does anybody have any questions that I that I could answer?
Yeah, Gear.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Chu. I really appreciate, always appreciate the updates. I'm always delighted to see the growth and of the access fiber internet. And it it really is a good thing. Just a couple of questions, though. What I would love to continue seeing at least, you know, because I'm not on the fiber committee, is that as we move forward at an appropriate place, I would love to see how the costs versus the revenue generation to see at some point how close we're getting to breaking even. I know that's far down the line, but I like that kind of update so that we see that not only are we making tangible progress on the number of customers, but the revenue that's coming in as a result of that action is generating us closer in either ahead of schedule or not. Secondly, I still like to see at some point, maybe, you know, there's another way other than in your presentation, but I'm still curious to see what areas are progressing faster with take rates versus the other. I know you talked about combining that into one. I totally understand that. But I'm still curious, you know, because some areas will want it faster in that take rate. And so I'm just curious about that. And so I'd like to be kept up on that. Lastly, about to your point about how the Facebook or social media advertisement, you can always tell how they generate interest in, you know, the calls coming and and people are requesting and or possibly learning about new service. I still would encourage the continuation of using that. Maybe not aggressively, but just vigorously, because again, there are our competitors out whom are coming through the neighborhoods, trying to commit, get our people to commit to two-year service terms. That's that guaranteed lock-in that they want. And so all of that, I'm sure they are aware of what we're doing. So I just think that by continuing that outreach, you know, inexpensively with Facebook or other social media, it helps remind people that we're here, we have an excellent service, is one that I think will give a better quality of service, better product, and more for their money. But just that reminder, so people are not necessarily impulsive as they await for the service to come to their area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Young, and appreciate the the feedback. Mr. Lindberg and I have a have a plan that we will do regular updates on our business plan to the the city councils. So yes, that is a point well taken. We want to continue to keep you informed and up to date on that. I will try to find some different ways to to show the the information in terms of what the the take rates are, where we are offering service. And yes, we are actively marketing. And I think that the the ability to to reach out and talk to somebody at the city is helping people to to make decisions about what they're looking for in their service.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Walters.
If you could skip back just a couple of slides to the service area map. The service area seems to include the area between Commercial Avenue and R Avenue. Yeah, I made one more there, that one.
Sorry. One more back.
So if somebody's on the west side of Commercial Avenue, are they eligible to receive service? Or are they outside the service area and you can't hook them up?
What we do is we look at where the placement of the MST's are to see if we are able to to provide service. Sometimes they do need to to wait just being on the the wrong side of the street. But but we actually send a technician out to to take a look and evaluate what the options are.
So I assume then that our message ought to be to them, any business on the west side of Commercial Avenue, on the south end there, that they should call. They should call and ask.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Mayor Mayor Gear.
Mr. Miller.
I just, since we had a nice discussion on the the four-point-five million dollar line of credit and how that's going to go up, and I think we all understand why, but a lot of it is tied to the EDA grant. So for anybody who's watching, I guess that my question is, Ms. Chu, can you remind us on what that amount is? And and then is there anything we can do to to help that that happen? Because it's a it'll be a it'll be a happy day if that one comes through for us.
So the final application was for two and a quarter million dollars through the the EDA. They will look at eighty percent coverage of the of the costs. The design was separated from that because we want to continue to to work with with no internet. But it would be for the the materials and construction costs associated with getting it to the MST. We'll continue to to work with customers on the actual install to the the premise. We in terms, in terms of, is there anything else that we can do? We worked and had many, many meetings with the the EDA in preparing our application and have taken every opportunity to to strengthen it. If there was anything that they suggested, we made sure that all of those attachments were included, that we have the the history of why we're moving forward with this project, what our long-term goals are, what the economic development impact will be of of building the network. So in in the end, it's a several hundred-page application. So I think we've put our best foot forward.
It like it all sounds great. I just wanted to kind of remind council and anybody who might be watching that we hopefully won't need the full four-point-five million dollar line of credit. And but again, we're we we gave that to you and and we want to do anything to help support the EDA grant as well.
Thank you. Mr. McGoel.
I'm I'm trying to remember. I don't think we have a formalized dig wants policy for for development. Is that correct?
You know, I probably would have to defer to to Mr. Beckenmeyer on on that. There is some new language that is coming through the public works that that after new pavement is laid, that there will be a certain amount of time before that that pavement can be disturbed. And so we are actively working with the the Public Works Department about some areas that we know that some design work is expected, construction work is expected to happen this this spring. And we're trying to make sure that our work is done in that area ahead of time, which actually could help save us some costs in terms of the repairing the the road to to the original.
Yeah, totally. Yeah, and I was I was thinking in in twenty twenty-one, there may be some developments where where new roads are getting put in, like in the MJB property, that kind of area where just want to be making sure that we're in conversation with them to make sure that conduit gets put in place before roads go in. That way the conduits are ready to go and that makes for lower-cost construction later down the road.
Yes, I know that those conversations are happening.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Great report. Thank you, Ms. Chu. At this time, we'll move on to item five C, which is Resolution thirty thirteen, providing for employee leave benefits in response to COVID nineteen epidemic. This is a discussion of possible action. Mr. Hogland.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council and members of the audience. I'll share my screen again. This is picking up where kind of where we left off last week. So last week, Resolution was adopted that clarified the use. It clarified the use of city sick leave for those COVID-related items that were previously covered under the FF-CRA, the Families First Coronavirus Relief Act. So this this first slide. So I'm sorry, so clarifying the resolution last week, clarifying that city sick leave could be used for those purposes. There, at least when I read the policy, there was some question in my mind whether city sick leave could be used for some of those things that the FF-CRA required, such as when a school was closed or a daycare was closed. Nobody was actually sick, but there was no place to take your kids. So the resolution last week clarified that. Now the discussion this week continues on whether council wants to provide additional leave for those coronavirus-related absences. So this first slide is kind of a recap of what we talked about last week. The FF-CRA expired December thirty-first, twenty twenty. It required eighty hours of emergency paid sick leave. On top of any existing leave banks, it also required the expanded use of paid FMLA for those COVID-related absences. And then our city policy followed that and expired December thirty-first as well. So this is the some information on the leave benefits that we that we used last year. And we talked about some of this as well, but I wanted to document it on a slide. So the EPSL, that's the additional leave bank that the city was required to provide on top of the existing leave balances. We had fifty-six staff use some of those hours. Sixteen staff used all eighty of those hours and twenty-three-hundred-and-sixty-three hours in total were used. And then we had two employees use the total of three hundred and one additional FMLA hours. So this is some additional information. I don't remember if we talked about this last week, but I found it interesting. And this is the accruals, but the sick leave accruals in two thousand and nineteen versus two thousand and twenty. So the total accrued in twenty nineteen was twenty-two thousand hours, and that's an average of a hundred and four hours per employee. And in twenty nineteen, it fifteen thousand five hundred and eighty used, which is an average of seventy-three per employee and a differential of thirty-one hours. So a differential of plus thirty-one, where thirty-one additional hours were accrued then used. And in twenty twenty, there were fewer hours accrued at twenty thousand fifty-six, more hours used at sixteen thousand seven hundred. And that average accrual was a negative eighteen. So there were more hours on average used than accrued in in twenty twenty. So there were a number of leave, there a number of leave elements that I wanted to to clarify. So this little matrix right here. The third, the third line down says twenty twenty. So this is through twenty twenty through December thirty-first, twenty twenty. So the different leave options for providing COVID leave. So the first option was city sick leave. And I I put in this box in twenty twenty, it was unclear, but it really didn't matter because there were those other leave elements that were available. The EPSL, that was available. And you see the asterisks I have here. I have a little tick mark legend down here. So the EPSL is an additional eighty-hour leave bank. It expired twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty. So as of today, at least, as of right now, that is no longer available. The second item was, or I guess it'd be the third item, FMLA. That was available for use in twenty twenty. Not available for use now. That expired as part of the FF-CRA that expired December thirty-first. And then Washington paid family medical leave. That's a Washington state-specific leave program that is available for certain qualifying events. And that was not available for use for COVID-related items in twenty twenty. And as of now, is still not not available. So what we have at this point is the city sick leave program. So the so the question still remains, council discussed last week, if council wants to do something additional. So that's, so you clarified last week with Resolution three thousand and twelve. So the 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 discussion now is if you want to do something in addition to the regular city sick leave. So that leave bank would be in addition to the existing employee balances. I think we discussed this last week. The average employee sick leave balance is currently three hundred twenty-five hours. And a reminder, that's not a bell-shaped curve. One-third of the city employees have more than three hundred twenty-five hours, two-thirds have less than that, but three hundred twenty-five is the average. And a city FTE accrues eight hours of sick leave per month. So any additional balances that council will be talking about would be in addition to those eight hours of leave that are already being accrued. There are, and I I did want to remind council, there are provisions in city policy. If a staff member runs out of leave, there are provisions where they can request a leave share for, you know, for certain qualifying events. So there is kind of a, I guess, a safety net, if you will, in in that there are leave share provisions. And I did want to point out, the city could take no action on this issue, other than what you already have with last week's resolution. But that's kind of the kind of the recap. We don't have at this time. So again, I guess a reminder, the the hours that were used last year, we had the CARES Act grant that we were able to get reimbursement for these hours. We charged the cost of these hours against that grant and the city got reimbursed. We don't have that available at this point. It looks like the federal government is trying to get something going, but at this point, any additional balances would be would be at the city's expense. At at this point, at least, there is no grant options available. So.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Miller.
And and again, the the this is my main issue, and I I appreciate you reminding the council of that. EPSL, FMLA, WPFML, that's all stopped. And anything that we would approve is is direct from, you know, our 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 taxpayers in Anacortes, unless, of course, there's some state or federal thing that comes up in the future. So I'm working from the assumption, as I usually do, that we're not going to get bailed out on this. So that's that's where I am. And just to, you know, I'm not not trying to. But but to that end, I'm trying to get your, my favorite thing that that you do is crystal ball analysis based on what we've done. And I think it's easier based on this information you've provided me, because it seems like there's sixteen staff members that have a serious issue going on that we can probably figure it out. We have fifty-six that have something going on. So I guess what I'm looking for is if, say, we approve a forty-hour thing, what in your crystal ball estimation is that going to cost us? And again, no bailouts in the future, no, no Washington family sick leave, no federal. I don't want to discuss that because I have to discuss it from my point of representing the citizens of Anacortes.
Sure, right. So we did, we did pull some information, some grant information. The EPSL cost, well, this the EPSL and FMLA costs was about a hundred and twenty thousand, hundred twenty thousand eight hundred and nine dollars is what we had documented for those, the cost of those hours that we got reimbursed back from the CARES grant. And that was a total of twenty-six hundred and sixty-four hours between the EPSL and the FMLA. And that works out to about forty-five dollars an hour, which I I guess sounds about right. It might be. But anyway, that's, you know, maybe we're mixing apples and oranges a little bit, but that's.
Crystal ball ballpark guesses, yes.
Yeah, 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 right, right. So yeah, so based on, based on that, it works out to about forty-five dollars an hour. If we had fifty-six employees participating in those hours, that works out to about forty-seven point six hours each on average. That. Yeah, so I guess we can go from there if if that's.
Well, I was hoping you were going to finish the math problem for me, so I didn't have to get my calculator out.
If.
The crystal ball math problem of if fifty or sixty employees at forty-five dollars an hour. If a crystal ball math problem of if 50 or 60 employees at $45 an hour uses 40 hours of sick, you know, help me out with that math. So that worst case is the budget for me.
Yeah, okay. So if we had that same, so if we had, say, 60, 60 employees at that same average of 45, 35 an hour, and they used 40 hours, that would be 108,800. And that's, and that's straight math. I guess, one thing, I mean, I would, I mean, you know, I think you know what I'm going to say. It's not, it's not necessarily money out of pocket right now, but it's it's saving those leave banks that.
I I I understand that. I just have to have some sort of fiscal impact, because the other issue I go to, I mean, what is, what's the goal we're trying to, what's, what's the problem we're trying to solve? Clearly, there sounds like there's some management issues that that the directors could probably work out with the 16 employees, perhaps. You know, is the goal try to prove to that the city benefits are so awesome compared to the bowling alley benefits? You know, I I don't want to go down that path, but I got to have some sort of metric to the to say, okay, is it 80? And again, I know the personnel committee struggled with this a lot. Do, is the is the answer not do anything at this point? And, you know, keep working with the staff or agree to a 40 or or an 80? I'm I'm, I think now I can look and say, worst case, the dollar value is approximately 100,000 if for 40. And again, I know it's apples to oranges comparison, but, you know, it's it's sick leave that we're paying somebody to not be at work. But again, the goal is, I don't, I don't want sick people, whether it's COVID or anything else, coming to work, getting other people sick or or citizens that we serve sick. I I get all that. But also, if it's a childcare issue, there's probably some director things and and management things that can be done. So again, I know that's why the personnel committee struggled with coming up with it. And I know you're kind of like, one of the answers is maybe not do anything. But but those, those are my thoughts.
Mayor Gear.
Young.
You know, again, thank you, Mr. Miller. You know, of course, the personnel committee did struggle with lots of questions, trying to get our arms around, how do we truly be fiscally frugal and fiscally responsible, but at the same time recognizing the havoc that, you know, the COVID epidemic has been on our the world, really. And so we struggled with that. We really did. And we tried to come up with a way to be compassionate, but also understanding, hence the reason why we pushed for allowance of sick leaves to be used a little bit differently. What I do think would be Mr. helpful, Mr. Hogland, is there's a question that I think in your answer would be helpful, is that should the federal government come again with a rescue, you know, and I think Mr. Miller used bailout again, but I like, but you know, but either word that you use, the point is, if there are resources to come, will these programs be refunded? Because if they are going to be refunded, should we get it, then that means that, you know, these areas that was originally pushed forward will allow for payment should an employee need that additional time. I think that's crucial, because I do think, you know, 100 and something thousand dollars is a lot of money. I do think that given we are allowing an employee to use some of their accumulated time, I think is a good thing. I think it's a lot of time that's accumulated. And I think sometimes the very purpose of that time is using it in times like this. So, you know, I I totally get it. But I think if you can answer that question for us, I think would also help. What do we do? Do we do nothing? Or do we do something?
It does look like the, the, at least it sounds like the feds are trying to get something done. So I I feel encouraged that there will be something coming at some point. It remains to be seen if that would be, if retroactive payments would be eligible. We are trying to track our time in in that case. So if it is, if retroactive charges are eligible, we would be able to to take advantage of that. And we also have language in this resolution. If council were to adopt this resolution and a program comes at a later point, either at the state or federal level, then that would supersede this resolution.
Got it. So you're basically saying that should state or federal government come with a rescue, this will allow us to not only as a city being reimbursed for, you know, what may or may not have been used, but okay, so these programs that we originally had would almost be re-implemented or reconstituted with funding?
Yeah, if that were the case, if then, yeah, then this this local program that if that were to be adopted would be set aside and superseded with whatever comes from the state or local level.
Mr. Hogland.
Mr. Cleveland.
All right, Ryan. So I just had one question. So we have an FMLA, and in March of 2020, it decided it was COVID was, and those six items were included as options to exercise that that option, that right. When it expired in just at the end of the year, are they still able to use FMLA for those six COVID related issues without payment, but to take that leave time? Is that still an option, or is that gone away? I guess that's kind of my question. If it's, you know, can we, is it an unpaid option to still kind of preserve your your position within the business or organization?
Right. So my my understanding is that those those six elements that were identified in the Coronavirus Relief Act were, would, would not still be available to use for, to be able to use FMLA leave for. And so that FMLA leave, it's a, so that's a 12 week program that runs on a, it it runs for the the employee on on an annual basis. So there's 12 weeks within the annual timeframe. And what FMLA did, it's it's generally an unpaid program, but it preserves the employee's job. What what if the expanded, you know, the expanded use to the the COVID Relief Act provided the payment of that, and then also those expanded, the expanded use for those COVID related elements. So my understanding is all of that has expired. So it's no longer a pay provision. And those existing six reasons, five or six reasons that were identified in the Relief Act are no longer applicable for the FMLA use.
Thank you. It's it's nice to kind of have that understanding, you know, within our discussion tonight. So thank you.
Mr. Hogland, do we have a sense of when we might hear from the federal government? Are we talking within a month? Are we know any sense?
Yeah, no, I this, that's a great question. I was just watching, just this morning, watching a webinar where they were talking about that. And they didn't have, I mean, that was one of the elements of the but they, so there wasn't a, there wasn't a timeframe indicated. So they were kind of indicating it's it's coming, pretty confident it's coming. But the timing is is unknown. At least I haven't heard anything, any rumors or anything.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Walters.
I understood that the second round of coronavirus coronavirus relief legislation allowed allowed employers to extend the emergency paid sick leave, also the extended FMLA. It didn't reimburse it like like we were eligible for reimbursement. It it offered tax credits that would be available to private employers and not us. But I wonder, I would like to have some sense of what private employers are doing, because I I don't want to do something less than private employers. Obviously, that's going to be all over the board, but maybe there's, maybe we can get some sense of what they are doing. If there's no urgency to this, if if people are not in danger of running out of sick leave, and if we can address this retroactively, then I would be okay with holding off for a month, see what Congress does. There may be an entirely different package in a month with very different rules. And why do we need to do this twice?
I would agree with that too, Mayor Gear.
Okay.
So so long as no staff members are in real jeopardy in that next 30 days or so, period.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Miller.
Well, I mean, it seems like there are 16 staff members, and I'm sure the mayor will 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 get into that and make sure the directors are are helping out where 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 they can, and and the whole staff. But other than that, I tend to agree with Mr. Walters' point.
Thank you. Mr. Hogland, do you have a sense of that if it's tonight? Or is that something you and I need to dive into?
Yeah, I think I think we need to take a little deeper dive on that.
Okay. So if we could, you know, if we took a deeper dive and we found out something we were concerned about, we could bring it back to the council and let you know why we wait for the the federal government to take some action.
Mayor Gear.
Yes, Mr. Walters.
And and there are other policies as a stopgap measure that we could look at as well. So for instance, if someone goes to gets to zero in their regular sick leave bank, we could extend emergency paid sick leave that would kick in only if they went to zero, or other stopgap measures while we're waiting for Congress to act.
All right. So I get the sense that we'd like to table this. We'll bring it back to you as we, as soon as we hear from the federal government, or if we have an issue before we hear from the federal government. Is that kind of a nod, head nod that I'm getting? Okay. All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Hogland, important issue. I appreciate you looking out for the employees of the city. Complicated, and we will get through this. So, all right. So that is the end of items under agenda, item number five. And now we're going to agenda the item number six, which is executive session. And we're going to go into executive session for potential litigation or litigation per RCW 42.30.110. And we will be in executive session for possibly 45 minutes. And if after executive session, I will adjourn the meeting. So because we're in the Zoom format, we now need to exit the Zoom format and go into an executive session meeting format that is attached to your calendars. So I'll see you all in a moment. And hey, here we go. Thank you.